All right, welcome to the Bellevue City Council Meeting. It's Tuesday, August 6th at 5:00 PM. We're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance. We're gonna follow that with the invocation. We've got a special guest here this evening, Kalen Dawson from Troop 231. He's the Chaplain Leader. I'm gonna have him come up and lead us in the pledge, if you would, and then we'll have the pastor come up, so please remain standing.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kalen. And we have Pastor Brian Rice from Christ the King Lutheran Church.
It is National Night Out. Many of you are in your T-shirts and tonight we're gonna have lots of people across the community joining together, getting to know the neighbors, celebrating this great city that is Bellevue. It's been my experience that police and fire have shown up. It's a great way to give thanks to the people who serve in this community. And in that spirit of Thanksgiving, I'd like to thank whoever resurfaced the tennis courts. They are amazing. I got to play on McCann last night, so in that spirit of celebration and Thanksgiving, let us pray. Good and gracious God, on behalf of all who are gathered here today, on behalf of all who live in our community, we give you thanks for the many and abundant blessings. We give you thanks for life itself, for the measure of health. We need to fulfill our callings for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. We lift up to you our mayor, our city officials, and in particular, this assembled council, and we ask that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of welfare and the true needs of our people, a thirst for justice and what is right, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives, joy in their task. We ask for your blessing upon those who serve Bellevue in many and various ways, though often much of what they do is unseen. Bless them with pride in its significance. Bless them with patience and encouragement when they receive the frustrations of others. We pray for the agenda that's set before the council today. Let good judgment rule all decisions. Let what is decided tonight be what is, what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around Bellevue. And it's in your most blessed name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. A call to order and roll call, please, Susan.
Mr. Stinson.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Shannon.
Here.
Mr. Preister.
Here.
Mr. Burns.
Here.
And Ms. Welch.
Here.
Thank you. This meeting is conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located at the rear wall of the council chambers. Five, approval of agenda, consent agenda, claims and advisory committee reports. Five A, approval of the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Welch.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would make a motion to amend the agenda. My motion is that we move items sixteen A through I to the consent agenda.
We have a second on that amendment to the motion?
I'll second.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Stinson, to amend the agenda, moving the consent, moving sixteen A through sixteen I to the consent agenda. Any questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve the agenda by Shannon, seconded by Welch. The amended agenda? Any questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item five B, approval of the consent agenda. Is there any items that a council member wishes to remove from the agenda? Do I have a motion? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you again, Mayor. I will move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Preister, seconded by Burns. Any que- Please vote.
All voted yes.
Moves us to item number eight, special presentations. Eight A is quarterly budget review. Rich Severson, our finance director.
Yeah, since I've been here, you had a frequent speaker that would show up and they just would insinuate that we had been cooking the books. And I'm here to tell you, there's no truth to that rumor. We've got nine months in the books, ten if you count last month, and the city is really doing quite well for the current year. The only hiccup being that during the year, we refinanced some bonds that I had not contemplated when we put the budget together. But bond interest rates were in a place that we were able to refund, pay out some existing high-interest bonds, and we then issued new lower-interest bonds and saved about a million dollars over the life of those bonds. So we did that. We also issued some bonds to cover last year's street improvements. And because of those two things, those were movements between funds and the paying off of the bonds are counted as an appropriation, as an expenditure, kind of a technical thing, because we also issued bonds in equal amounts, so the cash didn't change. But the fact that we did make expenditures to pay off bonds, will, you're gonna see later on today, tonight, that we need to amend the budget. So really, that's the only thing that changed, and you'll see here that we had an appropriation of seventy-nine million, and with those bonds, we were looking at spending a little more than, than the seventy-nine million through the end of the year. Now, the revenue also went up by roughly an equal amount, so that means that there was no change in cash and the, and as far as the rest of the city was concerned, we're doing great. So after the budgeted, after the amendment tonight, you're gonna see about eighty-seven million. We're just gonna gross up the expenditures so that we have a little room to work with here through the end of the year, because those last, these last couple of months, you never know, especially with the flooding and stuff, there could be some additional expenditures. But we also received revenue. And so the bottom line is where we're at today, even with those changes, we're in a better spot cash-wise. So, and that's the one thing that we really look at. We try to make sure that we're managing all that cash properly. Debt at the city, right now, we're sitting at about fifty-three, four-thirty. There is a little extra that came with the annexation, but last September thirtieth, we're at fifty-three, six-seventy-five. So we, with the debt that was there, we've actually paid some off. And that is partly because I think we've been doing the right thing with some of those refundings. Anytime that we get a chance to refinance at a lower rate, we're gonna do it and then pay off a little extra principal so that we can keep managing that debt down. We had, too small to read, but this is a whole list of all of our capital projects. And really, except for a couple of projects that we, that we were looking at doing, a couple of ball fields and some tennis courts, we were going to do those projects if we got the, the funding from outside grants. Those grants never came through, so we're not doing the projects. Other than that, our capital project list is pretty much on track. And actually, some of the street improvements that we had budgeted for about five and a half, four and a half million, they're gonna come in more like three and a half million. So everything is looking pretty good. The revenues, property taxes and, and the in lieu of tax and sales taxes are all up over last year, and we're tracking pretty good, a little bit better than the budget. So the only thing that's, that continues to go down a little is some of the occupation taxes that we'll, we'll have to just look at that and, and budget appropriately in the future. Expenditures, the people and departmental expenditures are all under their budget. And even though they're three to five percent over what we paid last year, that I think is, is somewhat well managed. The rest of this report, it's out there on the, all fifty-eight pages are out there on the website, and people can go out there and take a look. It's got everything from our cash balances to graphs showing where we think our, our cash balances will be by the end of the year. And it gives you variances between the budget in this year and last year and this year. If you wanna see, you know, how we're tracking on, on revenues like property taxes, sales taxes, things like that. It's by fund, so you've got the wastewater fund, the debt service fund, and everything right here shows that we're doing pretty good. This is one of the pages that you can look at. It's got far too much detail to go over now, but it tries to explain all of the little variances for each of the accounts that the departments, whether they've spent a little more, a little less, some of them are hundreds of thousands of difference, some of them are a couple thousand. So I'm gonna let people go through those at their leisure. So if there's any questions, I'm willing to entertain those.
Councilwoman Welch.
Mr. Severson, just a quick clarification question for me. It looked like the budget was set and then we had enough revenues coming in that we didn't need to change the budget, but yet we're changing the budget.
That's because you have to count the expenditures separately. You spend a dollar, or you budget a dollar, you budget a dollar revenue, dollar expense. If you spend two dollars, even though you got two dollars in, for statute, an expenditure is an expenditure, and that, and that seventy-nine million was the appropriation that this group approved last year. And so it would be like if you were budgeting a dollar, you spent two, you have to go back and amend your budget, because you really can't spend that other dollar before the end of the year.
Even if you had the revenue coming in.
Even though we, we had offsetting revenue.
Got it. Thank you for that clarification.
It's kind of a technicality, but it's, they look at the gross revenue, or gross expenditure.
Thanks.
Any other questions on the budget review? Okay, thank you, Rich, for presenting that. I'd say thank you for preparing it, but I know you always prepare it, so.
Tasty. Got just the right amount of cash in there to make this ice.
And Rich is always there for all my questions, and I know he answers your questions too. Some of us, he has to explain it twice, like me, but thank you, Rich, for doing a good job. Okay, item number nine, approve citizen communication. There are none. Item number ten, liquor licenses. Ten A, recommendation to approve a special designated liquor license for the Crook, Inc., doing business as mixers, pub, and grub, nine-ten Fort Crook Road South for a parking lot party on Saturday, August twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen, from eleven AM to ten PM. Are there any representatives here? Please come forward. If you wanna say anything, you can, otherwise just enter your name.
Yeah, Daris Peterson. I'm the owner of the Crook, Inc., mixers, pub, and grub, here to answer any questions.
Okay, and then your address as well, if you could sign in, that'd be great.
My home address is seventy-four oh five, South Eighteenth Street, Bellevue, six eight one four seven.
And then if you'd sign in, I'll open up the public hearing, and if there's any questions, we'll have you come back up. This time, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience here to speak for or against the special designated liquor license? Anybody here to speak for or against? Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing and I'll ask for a motion. Councilman Stenson?
I'll make a motion for discussion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Stenson, seconded by Shannon. Now discussion? Councilman Stenson?
Just have one question on the security part. You've got showing ropes to secure the, statute states that you have to have it secured.
Yeah, most of the area that it'll be is bounded, bound, boundaried by the building or a, or a wooden fence. The part in the parking lot that we're gonna rope off, it's kind of like a flag rope, but we will have staff out there at all times to make sure nobody goes outside that area with any drinks.
I guess that's my only concern. Usually, they use like the snow fencing or something like that. Are you able to put that up instead of rope that?
I could. The problem's gonna be mounting it, because it's an asphalt parking lot. I might be able to run, run it by the telephone poles in our parking lot.
Yeah, I'm just not sure how secure it's gonna be with just a rope. People can dip underneath that rope and get out, come back in, or how you're gonna monitor who's in your area, unless you're gonna have security all the way around the.
Well, we were planning on having somebody at each point, and the only entrance from the businesses, one door on the building of the business where they can walk into that area. So it'll be pretty easy to see if anybody's walking outside that area. But we could, you know, do a snow fence if that was what was required.
I would prefer the snow fence. I don't know how the rest of the council feels. I think snow fence is more secure, and that's usually what people use when they have these type of events to keep it in.
Is there a height requirement that you'd like to see on it?
Four feet.
Four feet. Okay.
With a commitment to do that, I can support you.
Okay. Yep, not a problem.
Councilman Cook?
Thank you for coming tonight and answering our questions. From the drawing, it looks like it's including the other bar.
Well, the, the entrance to the other bar is not part of it. The entrance is outside the fenced-in area. It's only including, I own both properties, so we're gonna, because of the natural barrier of the building and the large fence that's already there, we're going over to the side of the building. But alcohol will only be served from one location, and that's from mixers.
I guess my concern is, you probably have two different, do you have both bars?
Yes.
Trying two different liquor licenses.
Yes.
Going from one property onto the other. I don't know if that's.
Well, it's a common parking lot. And actually, we've kinda revised a little bit of what we're gonna rope off, because we measured it out. We're actually only going to be in the mixers parking lot. We revised that from when I did the drawing. We're just gonna go out from mixers to the middle of the parking lot and then straight back to the natural fence that's already there. So it's gonna be a lot smaller than what it showed.
Well, from your diagram, it looks like it's for both bars, and I didn't realize you own both of them, both properties.
Yes, I do own both properties.
I think probably at Sarpy County, there's probably a lot for one bar, one building, and a lot for the second one. And I guess, my thought was, how do you go into the next lot?
Well, the parking lot we share between the two, it's just one big parking lot. There really isn't a, this is this parking lot, this is this parking lot. It really, they all just kinda share the same parking lot.
Your liquor license tells you where the lot lines are.
Actually, liquor license is strictly to the door of the building.
Okay.
Because we can't take alcohol without a special, special license outside the building.
I'm just saying, as far as the description of the property.
But we are, when we rope it off, it's gonna be only on that side of the parking lot. In fact, where the one thirty-five is, down to the other one thirty-five, that line will just run right down there.
All right. Thank you.
You bet.
Councilman Shannon? Who are you using for security?
It'll be my own staff.
What age group, what training?
Well, I've, I've had them as security for, you know, inside the, the location for years. I mean, just general bouncers. And then myself, I'll be out there all day.
Okay, because you've got several side-rooped areas and front-rooped areas. I'm just wondering how many people are gonna be watching these, because?
My plan is to have three. It's, when you see it, it's really not as big as it looks on a piece of paper.
Okay.
Yeah, it's really not gonna be difficult to, for us to be able to monitor at all.
We appreciate you coming and answering our questions tonight.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Welch?
Just a quick question. Have you done this type of party before?
Yes, I have, many times. I've owned bars for a long time.
So this is something that you're just getting the request, but it's something, it's not your first party. You've done this over and over and over and never had any, and never had any problems.
No, we've never had any problems. We had one just a month ago and never had any problem. Month, two months ago, I guess, back in June.
Thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions? And just to note, the police department did look at it and came up with no objections. All right, I have a motion by Stenson, seconded by Shannon. Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item ten B, recommendation to approve the application of a location change for the Industrial Social Hall, Inc., doing business as Knights of Columbus Hall from two oh five Industrial Drive to one zero two zero Lincoln Road, and the new property description. Are there any representatives? Thank you. Please state your name and address and sign.
My name is Larry Reed, and my address is one oh one Kings Drive here in Bellevue. I've been a citizen of Bellevue for forty-seven years, and also I'm representing the Bellevue Council, sixty-one ninety-two Knights of Columbus. For the last thirty-four years, we had the hall down on Industrial Road Drive. And on March eighth, as you know, we were flooded with worst kind of water imaginable, a category-three flood. And we lost everything. We lost our history, we lost our records, we lost our pictures, appliances, and furnishings. And we really didn't have any insurance, so this past week, we purchased, or we kinda went to the dogs. We, we purchased B and B Dog, Hot Dog, building there at one oh, one oh, one oh, two oh, Lincoln Road. And I ask that, I ask for your support in okaying or by voting to approve the application of a location change from Industrial Road to our new place on Lincoln Road.
Okay, did you, I'm gonna have you sign in, then I'm gonna open it up for a public hearing. And is there anybody, we'll open it right now. Is there anybody here to speak in favor or against the liquor license that's brought forward? I guess it's a location change. Anybody for or against? Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing, entertain a motion. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion that we recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, the application of a location change for the Industrial Social Hall, Inc., doing business as Knights of Columbus Hall from two zero five Industrial Drive to ten twenty Lincoln Road, and the new property description.
Second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Burns. Discussion? Any questions? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. Larry, I'm already, we're just dealing with the application, the change of locations, but I'm already hearing from people there about parking and additional load on the area that's pretty tight and pretty congested, one way in and out. So in the future, there's probably gonna be other challenges, and I don't, I don't know what you can do about it. I'm sure, being in an awkward position with the flood, you're looking for what's available and you don't have ideal whatever you want. Just some comments maybe about congestion and parking and access?
We have, in addition to the, the actual building, we have purchased another three, three-point-two acres of property on the west side and on the north side of B and B Dog. We are, we are in the process of, of looking into getting a parking lot on the west side that should hold about three hundred cars or so.
Thank you.
And eventually, we also want a, another entrance and exit into that, which we own that part of the property too. So we're looking into that, that's our goal, and so I think that'll take care of all the parking problems.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, a question for Chris Shuchuck. That parking lot, I think there's already a curb cut, so they wouldn't have a problem adding another access on that, would they?
There, there is a curb cut there, yes. It'd be a right-in, right-out. There's a median in Harville Drive there. I was informed today that our Public Works Department is looking at that, the feasibility of that, so it'd be up to them to actually give it to them. They would still have access, obviously, off Lincoln Road.
All right. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. Larry, most of the events are evening events, so if there was a wedding reception where. So if there was a wedding reception where I know you do a big red, uh, gathering, those are six, seven o'clock at night, maybe up till midnight. So a lot of the businesses probably in that immediate area would be closed. You know, the, the DAS, the, um, I think there's an investment firm, maybe a hairdressing type thing. So a lot of the events would probably be held mostly Friday and Saturday nights and they're late enough where a lot of those businesses would be closed. So the in and out traffic, even if it was two hundred cars there, they wouldn't really be interfering with.
There's, uh, there's also eighty-five parking spots around those businesses. And so that, like you alluded to, they will be empty and, and they can be utilized as well.
So I, I think from a standpoint of that, it'll be good. They're probably the only business back there will be serving alcohol. But generally it would be in the evenings when other businesses are closed. Generally, it will be in the evenings when the other businesses are closed. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion by Cook, seconded by Burns. Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item number eleven, ordinances for adoption, third reading. Eleven A, ordinance number three nine five one, request to rezone lot one, would replat from RS seventy-two to RD sixty to allow for construction of a duplex. Uh, that's, the applicant is Paul Pignati, location seven eight oh one South thirtieth Street. And Jim, if you would read the ordinance description?
An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska as provided for by Article Three of ordinance number three six one nine, by changing the zone classification of the land located at or about seventy-eight oh one South thirtieth Street, or particularly described in Section One of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Stenson. Any questions? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I ju- I just can't support this because of the configuration and the narrowness of McCorkendale and knowing the problems that have been on McCorkendale that I've heard complaints about. But another concern is how this will configure on that lot when there is an OPBD substation about a block away from there and there's a very high tension line carrying electricity from there that's right on this property. Now, OPBD requires access to those lines and a certain amount of setback. And I don't know if we're, I was just out there again today and that huge pole is right there on the lot. And I don't know what kind of setbacks or requirements are in this. And without more information and given the existing problems, I, I can't support this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councilman Shannon? Can Public Works tell us what the setback requirements are? Or what do you do? Yeah.
We have not been, as far as the easement for the power lines, we have not been able to find that. Um, it's not recorded on the plat and, uh, so we're not quite sure what the actual distance from the power line is for their easement. The front yard setback, if they're faced, well, whichever face, street they face would be a thirty-five foot front yard setback from the property line. And again, we don't know how wide that easement is. The, the applicant and I think the potential buyers have been advised to, they need to check that out prior to building if they do build.
But as far as what we're discussing here tonight, this is strictly a zoning change. And we have other like properties. We have businesses. It's a mixed-use neighborhood and they're not on McCorkendale, so I'm going to support it. Uh, it's an oversized lot. Uh, there's, there's room for what they're doing within the setbacks and five other duplexes, three other businesses in the area, and I, I don't see a problem with it. Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, uh, we have a motion by Shannon, seconded by Stenson. Please vote.
Three voting yes and three voting no.
Mayor votes yes.
Motion passes.
Item number eleven B. Ordinance number three nine five three, increase in pay for the mayor and city council members. Councilman Shannon. Uh, Jim, would you read the ordinance description?
An ordinance to amend the salary and compensation of the mayor and city council of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska to repeal ordinance number three five six zero and to declare an effective date.
Okay, I need a motion? Mister Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve ordinance three nine five three. Second. Motion by Shannon, seconded by Stenson, or I'm sorry, seconded by Preister. Discussion? Mister Mayor? I would make a motion to amend ordinance three nine five three, adding a two percent annual pay raise for the mayor and city council beginning this, or effective December first each year, beginning December first, twenty twenty-one. That way we don't have to do this every couple of years to try to keep up. We'll just, this raise will take effect in December of twenty twenty, then beginning in December twenty twenty-one, we'll just have a two percent annual increase and we won't have to sit here and go through the circus again. Second. Okay, motion by Shannon, seconded by Preister to amend adding a two percent annual increase to all the councilmen salaries and mayor's salary annually, beginning December thirty-one. December one. December one of twenty-one. Twenty-one. Is that right? Any questions? Comments? Alright, so we have, uh, uh, need a mo- or we have a motion by Shannon and seconded by Preister. Please vote. This is on the amendment for the two percent increase.
Four yes votes and two no votes.
Takes us back to the emotion to approve ordinance number three nine five three as amended. Motion by Shannon, seconded by Preister. Comments or questions? Seeing none, please vote.
Four yes votes and two no votes with Mister Cook and Mister Burns voting no.
Motion passes, thank you. Congratulations, Mister Mayor. The drought is over. Item number thirteen, ordinances for introduction, first reading. Thirteen A, ordinance number three nine five four, request to annex sanitary improvement district number one seventy-one, Trigaron. Uh, Jim, can you read the ordinance description?
An ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, certain lands, lots and real estate lying within sanitary and improvement district number one seven one, as outlined in the ordinance to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska and designated and designating an effective date.
Okay, that's the first reading. The second, uh, reading of public hearing will be August twentieth, two thousand nineteen at six o'clock PM here in the council chambers. Item thirteen B, ordinance number three nine five five, request to annex sanitary improvement district number one seventy-seven, Fox Ridge Estates. And Jim, could you read the ordinance description, please?
An ordinance, an ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, certain lands, lots and real estate lying within sanitary improvement district number one seventy-seven as outlined in the ordinance to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska and designating an effective date.
Okay, the second reading, uh, in public hearing will be August twentieth, two thousand nineteen at six PM here in the council chambers. Item thirteen C, ordinance number three nine five six, request to annex sanitary improvement district number one eighty-two, three seventy point. And Jim, please read the ordinance description.
An ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, certain lands, lots and real estate lying within sanitary improvement district number one eight two as outlined in the ordinance to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska and designating an effective date.
That second reading in public hearing will be August twentieth, two thousand nineteen at six o'clock PM here in the council chambers. Item thirteen D. Ordinance number three nine five seven, request to annex sanitary and improvement district number one eighty-three, Pilgrim's Landing. Mister Risto, please read the ordinance description.
An ordinance to, to annex to the city of Bellevue, certain lands, lots and real estate lying within sanitary improvement district number one eight three, as outlined in the ordinance to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska and designating an effective date.
The second reading in public hearing will be August twentieth, two thousand nineteen at six o'clock PM here in the council chambers. Item thirteen E, ordinance number three nine five eight, request to annex sanitary and improvement district number one eighty-six. Oakhurst, Oak Ridge East. Mister Risto, the ordinance description, please.
An ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, certain lands, lots and real estate lying within sanitary improvement district number one eight six as outlined in the ordinance to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska and designating an effective date.
The second reading will be, in public hearing will be August twentieth, two thousand nineteen at six PM here in the council chambers. Item thirteen F, ordinance number three nine five nine, request to annex sanitary improvement district number one ninety-seven, Hartland Hills. Mister Risto, the ordinance description, please.
An ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, certain lands, lots and real estate lying within sanitary improvement district number one nine seven, as outlined in the ordinance to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska and designating an effective date.
The second reading and public hearing will be August twentieth, two thousand nineteen at six o'clock PM here in the council chambers. Item thirteen G, ordinance number three nine six zero, requested annex sanitary and improvement district number two sixty-five, Williamsburg. Mister Risto, the ordinance description, please.
An ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, certain lands, lots and real estate lying within sanitary improvement district number two six five, as outlined in the ordinance to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska and designating an effective date.
The second reading and public hearing will be August twentieth, two thousand nineteen at six o'clock PM here in council chambers. Item thirteen H, Jim, would you read that ordinance for, or would you read the ordinance description for ordinance number three nine six one?
Number thirty-nine sixty-one, request to annex lot one, except part dedicated for right of way. Southwest Elementary School addition and tax lots two A, two A two, located in the northwest one quarter section of section one five, T thirteen N, R thirteen E of the six PM. Parts of lot six and parts of lot seven, Trigaron Town Center, tax lots ten B and eleven located in the southwest quarter section ten, T thirteen N, R thirteen E of the six PM. Tax lot thirteen, located in the northwest quarter section of section ten, T thirteen N, R thirteen E of the six PM, parcel number zero one zero nine six nine three eight one. Part of tax lot three A, located in the northwest quarter, one quarter of section sixteen. T thirteen N, R thirteen E of the six PM, parcel number zero one zero nine eight three six nine four. Part of tax lot three A, located in the northwest quarter section of sixteen, T thirteen N, R thirteen E of the six PM, parcel number zero one one five nine eight four two one and tax lot three A two, located in the southwest quarter section of section nine. T thirteen N, R thirteen E of the six PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, applicant city of Bellevue.
The second reading will be, in public hearing will be August twentieth, two thousand nineteen at six PM here in the council chambers. Item thirteen I, ordinance number three nine six two, approve and amend budget for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen fiscal year. Mister Mayor? Yes. I would make a motion that we use the tool and suspend the rule and waive second and third readings so that we can vote on this item tonight as requested by the finance director.
I'll second that.
We have a, let's see, I'm gonna have Jim read that. Okay, we're good. Alright. Alright, so we have a motion by Shannon, seconded by Welch, to suspend the rules for the second, to waive the second and third reading and hold the public hearing and vote tonight. Any questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Okay, I will open the public hearing at this time. Is there anyone here to speak for or against? Or to ordinance number three nine six two? Anyone here to speak for or against? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Any discussion, questions? Councilman Preister?
Mayor, I will make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Second.
Okay, motion by Preister, seconded by Cook to approve the ordinance. Any questions? Comments? Alright, please vote.
Just a second, please. Here it comes finally. All voting yes.
Thank you. Item thirteen J, ordinance number three nine six three, approval of the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty fiscal year budget. Jim, would you read that ordinance description?
An ordinance to adopt the budget statement to be termed the annual appropriations bill to appropriate sums for necessary expenses and liabilities and to provide for an effective date.
The second reading and public hearing will be August twentieth, two thousand nineteen at six PM here in the council chambers. Item fourteen, public hearing on matters other than ordinances, we have none. Item fifteen, resolutions, fifteen A, resolution number two thou- two zero one nine dash twenty-three. Approve and authorize the mayor to sign resolution two zero one nine dash two three, approving the second amended budget for Sarpy County and City's wastewater agency for the two thousand eighteen nineteen fiscal year. Have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution twenty nineteen dash twenty-three.
Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Cook. Any questions, discussion? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Item fifteen B, resolution number two zero one nine dash two four. Approve the, approve and authorize the mayor to sign resolution number two zero one nine dash two four, adopting the Sarpy County and City's wastewater agency proposed two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget. Need a motion? Motion by Shannon, seconded by Stenson. Please vote. There's, is there any questions? Seeing none, please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item fifteen C, resolution number two zero one nine dash two five, approve and off- authorize the mayor to sign resolution. approve and auth- authorize the mayor to sign resolution number two-zero-one-nine-dash-two-five, to adopt and approve the jurisdiction and the growth management plan for the Sarpy County and City's wastewater agency. Councilwoman Welch?
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number twenty-nineteen-dash-twenty-five.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Stinson, any questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Moving to item number seventeen, uh, administration reports, is there any comments or questions on the reports? Councilman Shannon?
Just one item, um, Public Works. Jeff, I, I saw that, uh, we're doing a public meeting next Tuesday over at Anderson Grove. Can we get information on that sent out to the councils, so we know what's going on?
Sure, we can get that for you.
Okay.
Leonard Lawrence? Isn't it done at Leonard Lawrence? Oh, yes, at Leonard Lawrence.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right. Elementary school.
Yeah. And that's on the park up near Lynnwood Drive? Is that what you're gonna be discussing?
We... I'm not sure the street is quiet. We are having a meeting, inviting the community to Leonard Lawrence Elementary School, uh, to discuss the potential development of a splash pad in Looking Glass Park. We want their input to see if we should move forward, and if so, how we should move forward.
Okay, thank you, that was, that was my question.
Any other comments on the reports? Councilman Cook?
I just wanna, real quick, congratulate the Parks Department, the recreational department, and the, uh, library, they had many, many summer programs. And, uh, I think we concluded them, kids are going back to school this week, and another good summer by those departments. Thank you.
Moves us, uh, any other questions, comments? Moves us to number eighteen. Councilwoman Welch?
I move that the city council go into a closed session at this time for the protection of the public interest. Subject matter to be discussed in closed session is regarding real estate negotiations. The following individuals will be included in closed session, all city council members, Mayor Rusty Heike, City Administrator Jim Risto, Attorney Bree Robbins, Paralegal Tony King, Melvin Sudbeck, Jeff Ray, Andrew, Andrew Willis, and Chris Schuchek.
Second. Motion by Welch, seconded by Shannon, to go into closed session. Any questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you, the city council has voted to go into a closed session at this time, the subject matter to be discussed is closed, in closed session is regarding real estate negotiations. The following individuals will be included in closed session, all city council members, Mayor Rusty Heike, City Administrator Jim Risto, Attorney Bree Robbins, Paralegal Tony King, Melvin Sudbeck, Jeff Ray, Andrew Willis, and Chris Schuchak. It is now...